Welcome back, everybody. We're at our 2:15 agenda item. This is an action item. This is the CUP 24-02 River Fork Ranch action conclusions, and we are also going to see a draft of the development agreement. So at this time, David, welcome. Cindy, I guess I'll start with you and see where it goes.
Okay. The point of this meeting is to confirm that the facts, conclusions for River Fork Ranch subdivision, CUP 2402 preliminary plat represent the decision that and that the development agreement memorializes the application and the mitigation for the impacts identified. So we'll just start. I had put together some talking points for the facts and conclusions I think were really close. But if you turn to the bottom of page nine.
I don't have page numbers in mind, but oh, wait a minute. Sure you got it?
No, that's the one that's 16.
Page nine of the facts and conclusions.
I'm just starting to top the facts and find these effects. So I need to go to page nine of that?
Yes.
Okay, what are we talking about?
It says additionally, a road development agreement at the bottom third of that paragraph. It says additionally, a road development agreement that includes dust abatement requirement for the private roads internal to the proposed subdivision and a portion of Spink Lane, reconfiguration of the Spink Lane intersection to a 90-degree angle, and the addition of a left turn lane on Highway 55 as required as a condition of approval. I don't believe that she required that as a condition of approval, and I wanted to change that to additionally, a development agreement that includes dust abatement requirements for the private roads internal to the proposed subdivision and a portion of Spink Lane until the roads are paved with consideration of the reconfiguration of the Spink Lane intersection to a 90-degree angle prior to rebuilding the road base and the consideration of a left turn lane on Highway 55 as required as a condition of approval. Because you weren't requiring him to put in a left turn lane. You were requiring consideration of it.
Well, I guess in a different light, it would be require him to work with ITD if they do need a left turn or Ecel and XL lanes.
And so that's the consideration of the left turn lane.
The other thing I wanted to ask is part of the dust abatement on Spink Lane, do you need to define what section of Spink Lane? Or you just got a portion of Spink Lane?
The roads are paved blah blah and the Spink Lane intersection to a 90-degree angle. Let's see. He has to do dust abatement through the east side.
So, and you put east side in there?
Yeah, I believe it's in the it will be, it's going to be in the development agreement.
Just sort of.
From Highway 55 to his driveway, basically.
East entrance.
To his driveway.
The east entrance.
Yeah.
Okay, Cindy, so let me go back to the Highway 55 conversation. So the Highway 55 conversation is that ITD has already identified that needs a turn lane there. That was in the traffic impact study that we saw. So the traffic impact study that we saw had identified that needing a left, a southbound left turn lane.
Currently, it needs it.
And so when you say consideration of a left turn lane on Highway 55, I thought we had done a condition of approval, that that needed to be done because it's already been identified in the traffic study.
And I think even the applicant agreed to that, if I remember the conversation.
Steve Millman said it had been identified by ITD.
They said that it would, my understanding is that it would be considered as part of his proportional share. So, I mean, he can't, or, I mean, I don't know that we can require him to pay for the entire intersection, southbound, left turn lane. He can pay, we can require him to pay for his proportional share, is I believe what Steve Millman said, proportional share. But the discussion between John Carpenter, who couldn't be here today, the engineer for Mr. McCallister, Mr. Callister, and Dan Koontz, our engineer, is that Dan Koontz would rather see his proportional share paid on Spink Lane.
And Dan's here. Please come with the money.
I'm here.
Oh, okay, I didn't.
Came in a little bit late, but.
Yeah, so. Really, it's not your fault.
So in doing a proportionality share, I think, I'm looking at it holistically for the county's perspective. And I think a lot of times, working for ITD for many, many years, it's very hard for a jurisdiction to enforce within another jurisdiction's responsibility. Barring that discussion, you know, I think everybody is in agreement that it's probably an ideal situation to put a turn lane in there. I just don't think the requirement can be actually executed through another jurisdiction unless they go through the formal process of getting that permit applied for and approved. Because then it's just, it's just not going to happen unless you have that in written form.
So if we put this in the development agreement, that it give consideration to a left turn lane. So as we move through this, this is 30 lots. Now, if there's additional lots, then we can't move forward with additional lots unless we come to an agreement with ITD.
Unless ITD is in agreement that there can be work done on their jurisdiction.
Okay. We just put this in the road agreement then, that with the consideration of that turn lane. But we will let you guys negotiate the highest and best use of those funds for the county.
David, do you want to add anything to this? Or what are your thoughts?
I would, if you don't mind, Chairman.
Do you want to come up?
Oh, I'm at the front table.
No, I'm at a disadvantage because John, my engineer's at El Camp.
He's getting smoked out right now. He should be home soon.
I hope he is. Because I saw these Thursday night, and I panicked when I found he was going to be gone.
David, will you do me a favor and move that microphone over to the middle of both of you? Thank you.
I will, thank you. But I appreciate that Dan's here because my traffic vernacular is not as good as these two guys talk to each other, then talk to me. My understanding is the traffic analysis that we have done so far did not recommend a turning lane, but it in fact did this. It said that the site visibility for the turning at Spink Lane was categorized as adequate, both northbound and southbound, but it could be improved if ITD would remove trees on the south, on west side of the northbound area. In there, right of way, if they reduce trees, you could see a little further. It's, John told me it was an adequate distance now. It would be an increased distance then for almost little, little effort at all. He did bring that up to ITD. ITD, they indicated they could put that on their maintenance list, so they were aware of it. In addition to that, we had a traffic analysis of how many trips would generate, what direction they'd go. There were, with the 30 lots, they're very minimal, have very little impact whatsoever, that the generation of the trips don't have an impact on the current condition of the need for a turn lane. And to put it in perspective, and Dan, please correct me if I do this wrong. What I was told by John and from the traffic engineer that we hired was that any road that has over 200 trips a day, maybe an hour a day, would benefit by a turning lane. And that every single intersection of Highway 55 in Valley County would benefit by a turning lane. It's not unique to Spink. Is that true?
Yep, so we're looking at delay, essentially. Any improvement on an intersection that has the volume as State Highway 55, it's about delay in regards to turn lanes. And obviously, safety is included as part of that, but it's mostly delay. So if you could get vehicles out of the way of the people that are going south, it's a better situation because a lot of times when you don't have a turn lane, you have rear-end collisions. Adversely, right, you also have turning movements that are also T-bone movements, accidents that are also contributing to the safety aspect of it, too. And so there's two components to think about when you deal with any kind of intersection improvement.
So the reason I was making that recommendation is this isn't a specific condition of approval or a portion of the development agreement. This is just an answer to the fact that says, will the approval of the application result in an undue adverse impact on government services? So it's just a discussion underneath that question.
Okay, but here's.
The facts and conclusions.
Here's my issue. We know this is a phase development. This is phase one. There's at least another phase coming.
We have no other applications.
But the way the roads are set up in this application where they did in on their property line to the north, I assume there's going to be more down the road. When do you, you're saying 200? That's the magic number, is 200 cars a day?
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I apologize. The 200 cars a day are the traffic on Highway 55, not Spink. So it's Highway 55's traffic that induces the traffic, the train line, not Spink's.
And that's correct. It's more about the delay on State Highway, not Spink.
And the last thing that our traffic study did, again, our traffic study didn't conclude a traffic lane. It didn't even contemplate it. It was prior to the traffic lane was brought up. But the last thing it did was it did a historical I don't know, track, crash.
Safety evaluation, historic records over three or five years.
So in five, five years, there was one incident at this intersection. Now, there's only one number better than that. So our, our, our traffic study didn't, wasn't a red flag on any of these other real areas. Though the one thing that we all recognize is that if this road was squared up better, it would, it would function better. And there's a limitation on right-of-way, apparently. And John, before you were here, John worked with ITD and with Jeff and presented a layout that I think you've maybe have seen now. I don't know if it was.
I did, and I'm a little concerned about it because it doesn't allow for a vehicle that has a trailer or a large truck. So you're kind of still skewed in that area. You almost have to have a perpendicular length of about, I want to say 50 feet.
Yeah.
To make it so suitable for a vehicle with a trailer or a truck to turn there appropriately.
Yeah, so, so what, we have, the limitation that we have is the county and the state doesn't own the land sufficient to achieve that characteristic. And so obviously, we talked about eminent domain. So we have the boundary of eminent domain, which is a policy. We have the boundary of property, which is property. And so within those boundaries, we have what we can do. We can't do what Dan, my understanding, correct me, we can't do what Dan thinks is the best, which is the best.
Yeah, it's just not, you'll, you'll still have the same situation with more traffic on it. And I think that's a concern.
It is a concern. And if we, but by, but by squaring up, and there's actually asphalt for a period of time that could be striped. So squaring up and striping can induce a traffic pattern that's an improvement, not to the extent that we would like it to be. But we lack the abilities to gain that unless someone wants to have eminent domain. That's where we're.
Or a property owner donates it, right? They could donate that.
Yeah, they could. We would love for them.
Or the subdivision.
We would love.
The subdivision produces the right-of-way because we're not doing eminent domain for it.
Of course not. I'm just explaining that we, we, it could be, it could be improved if we had ownership. Without ownership, we can still improve it, but we can improve it more with more ownership.
Well, I noticed too, one of the last time that came through that there's a guardrail on the southbound, the west side, that you can't bump the highway over much further.
Well, that was the other element that John was talking to me about.
How are we going to do this?
Yeah, so if, so we haven't done the study on the turn lane, but we all, everyone in the traffic industry already knows that the study, we know what the conclusion's going to be. Highway 55, it already has sufficient traffic. Everyone recognizes it's been in traffic, that no matter what study you do, it will recommend a turn lane for efficiency of, everyone knows that. I mean, doing a study is silly. We know what the conclusion is. But the question is, obviously, the highway department, the state owns it, we don't. The application will probably have to come from the county, if it did, induce from the county. We're willing to parapportion the share. But as you noted, because of topography, to widen that would take, is going to take an enormous amount of material, and it will be very expensive. And if the county's priority is that, we will, we will jump in into our share. And that's your decision. We are a willing party, and to the extent that Steve talked about. And, and then we, we step back and allow.
So, Dan, let me ask you this. How does ITD do that? How do they figure, well, his subdivision is going to be 20% of the cost? How do they figure that? I just, just from my own brain.
How about if I kind of take a different approach to it? Is the, the state will look at it kind of an unfavorable recognition. I'm sorry. No, I know, Dave. I'm sorry if I say it incorrectly. But just, you know, let me know if there's a, there's an issue there. But with a, with a development that hires a contractor, that's not an ITD-run contract doing work on ITD system. They don't look favorable to that. So the portionality shares, you know, I think it's really about the turn lane in that way. And what ITD has done in the past is proportionate shares the, what do they call it? It's like the approach lane proportioned share. So if, for instance, if the turn lane was the responsibility of the developer, it would be like, if you look at it as three lanes going up to the intersection, and you have Spink, which is currently just a two lane, it would look at it holistically with the number of approach lanes coming into it. So if you look at it, so you have one at Spink, one at the state, one the turn lane, and the other one at the state. So there's four approach lanes. A quarter of that would be the responsibility of the developer. It has happened that way in a different look at it based on agreements with jurisdictions. So when another jurisdiction had an approach to ITD, if it was a signalized approach, and they had to come up with a cost to share the whole intersection, that's how they would do it.
Could I, could I make an observation on that? Okay. We would, we would disagree to a certain extent.
I figured that is probably.
ITD is not jurisdictional of our subdivision because we're not adjacent to the highway department. So they have no formula for us. And then their initial comment was, we're not jurisdictional. It was only after a commissioner insisted that we ask additional questions on specific things that they came back and says, well, you could find those things if you did this kind of a study. That didn't, that wasn't generated from the audience. It was generated there. But ITD is not part of really this, this thing. And they're not, and they're not recognizing us as a party to the intersection because we're not jurisdictional. And unlike a commercial, like if we were a commercial enterprise coming off the highway and creating a new entrance, then I would agree with his math. But I have, the way, I'm the worst guy to do this. Steve, Steve Millman, when he was doing this proportionally, here's what he did. He said, okay, I've got Spink Lane. I've got Spink Lane from the highway to Farm to Market Road. It goes further, but let's just take it from there. And he took the, he took the, he took the frontage on Spink Lane on both sides. And he says, you represent 1/12 of the frontage. And if we conservatively assume that all traffic on Spink Lane was generated by just the owners of those properties, then you would owe 1/12 of whatever it is that you did on that front end. That's not an unreasonable, in fact, it's probably more generous to you than anyone else because there's some sense to that. We all know that right now Spink Lane really only has, what, I think, four houses on it and traffic generated there is not really realistic. It's through traffic to the dump and whatever else. Anyway, there are formulas for it. We're not particularly going to argue that very severely. We, we have already agreed to extraction fees, which are contributing to whatever, whatever the highway department's priorities are. And we, obviously, we leave that to you. You generate the priorities, we will follow.
Well, I guess my concern is if we go in and we square up Spink Lane and we pave it, it's going to get a lot more use. A lot more use, because I know that's where all the Lakeshore trucks turn and a lot of big, heavy equipment turns there.
Well, if we.
But that's not your problem.
You're right. But if we paid it, we'd only pave it, the front part of it.
So his entrance wouldn't be the whole thing.
Right. I understand that part.
But you're completely correct. Every time you improve a road, you.
You get more use of it.
It's just one of those things that I always feel like, you know, the, at least my mindset that I'm trying to go on is improve our county system before we start looking elsewhere. I mean, 55 is truly just an animal in itself. But that's somebody else's jurisdiction, so it's hard to.
And I do get that. And my concern is, is so on the county side, to square up that intersection, I've looked at that thing a million times. So to square it, you're actually slowing people down to make a 90-degree, because right now it's just a sweep in there.
Right.
And a sweep out. So all those big trash trucks that are using this are now coming to almost a halt in order to take that 90-degree. And I don't know that that is a benefit. So I'd really like you to study that.
So this is on 55 to making a right on to Spink?
So Spink is kind of a free flow right now.
Kind of sweeps in.
And it just kind of sweeps in. So I really like you guys, you know, we can put this in the road development, or in the development agreement. Just as a roadway conversation. But let's look at that because I think right now, what we're going to do is actually slow traffic down hitting that road by realigning it. And I don't know that that is.
So that's why I said consideration instead of as a condition of approval. That's why I wanted that verbiage changed here in these facts and conclusions.
You keep control.
And then just another thought on that that should be left to the discussion with this developer, Valley County, and the other developer that has a preliminary plat approved right there at the intersection, is maybe it's a discussion between the three of them about how to get more right-of-way there because there is another subdivision going in.
And then is there a guy down at the bottom of the hill?
Well, he comes clear up to the top.
Oh, so that's your other guy.
Yeah, that's the other guy that might be able to assist in this additional right-of-way.
And he's putting.
It should be a discussion.
He's putting buildings up on top, so he'll access that, too.
So that gives us a different perspective in terms of this because you could keep what you could call a free-flowing right turn lane and allow for people to make more of a safe 90-degree turn out of there. So it would keep that. And then it would also keep it safe for people that are entering from Spink on to 55 going south.
We need to take a look at that whole thing and make sure we're doing the right thing and not just making a statement that we'll do something thinking we're improving it and it actually, at the end of the day, does not improve it. I do understand the conversation with ITD. We can't get ITD to do anything. However, we are requesting every development that is now entering 55 that they have a conversation with ITD. And so that is something that, you know, I think is still important that we put in there, that there is a consideration and that we do talk to ITD because we're, we're asking of every development and where they hit 55.
That's actually a very good strategy so that ITD can be on notice that there's a lot more development that is occurring on State Highway 55, which then would maybe focus their attention on doing a corridor study.
We just sent a letter requesting a corridor study, and I'm having every city and every, you know, anybody else that can send one, so yes.
They were going.
So the next talking point is at the bottom of nine also. And it's the, it just needs to be changed up a little bit. It should state, "The board with the input from Valley County Public Works Engineer will negotiate with the applicant proportionate share to be assigned to the applicant and memorialized in the development agreement prior to recordation of the final plat."
And with the approval of the Board of County Commissioners?
Well, they absolutely approve the development agreement.
Yeah, just, we would approve the whole thing, so.
Right. Because none of that will happen without you guys. But that leaves them open to discuss it with Mr. Schaefer.
Yeah. Too bad there's not a way we can't build into the system that you have all these developments off roads hitting the highway. You've got to set aside something for the future improvement of that heart ITD. You know, somehow you could lock that funding in over a period of years of development. There is.
That would be hard to.
Yeah.
That would be hard to do.
Like a latecomers agreement with, like, Idaho Power. So the next one is we need to clarify the acreage.
You missed one at the very bottom. What is it that is the proportionate share? And it might be in-kind services.
Where is, I'm sorry.
The last bullet point?
I'm not there yet.
Last sentence, number 11?
Okay. Last sentence, number 11, should read.
Last sentence. Can be applied through partner in the Valley County and may be in-kind services. Are you making a statement that the in-kind services, is he does the work instead of giving the cost to us? Is that clear enough for everybody to be understood that you're either going to do the work on behalf of the county or you're going to give us a check? I just wanted to make sure that that was clear as much.
I'll have the development agreement. Yeah, I want to add that sentence here.
Okay.
Okay? And then bottom of page 10. And item 12, and then page 12, item 5, we need to just clarify the acreage. It kind of gives the illusion that it's 43 acres of a 100, 70 acre, and then 78 acres is going to be open space. What they did was they split out the 43 acres from a larger parent parcel, and that's what this current application is. So we just need to make sure all those acreages in the facts and conclusions are saying the same thing, without the illusion of dedicated open space.
Yes.
Because there's no dedicated open space with this one.
So there's dedicated open space in that one parcel that goes back down to the riparian area? There's one parcel that's.
Oh, the 11, the.
Parcel 11.
11C or something like that.
It's within the forty-three.
Yes.
And we don't want people to believe that there's additional seventy-eight out there as part of our application, because it wasn't.
So we just want specific here.
We don't want to call that out here.
Right.
Understood.
So we need to change that. Then page thirteen, number two.
Back to our ninety-degree conversation.
Yeah, this is, we've thoroughly discussed this.
So what are you gonna put in there?
"Applicants complete a traffic analysis of Highway fifty-five as recommended by ITD. Analysis shall examine turn lane words due for the full bill that the applicant shall consider Highway fifty-five, tree lane trimming, and needing to improve site distances." And I want to include until such time as it is determined if the analysis submitted with the application was sufficient for ITD's requirement. And this should be included in the development agreement, and so that's that last sentence. Traffic, the applicant shall complete a traffic analysis. So I have a question as to whether or not, I think they've already submitted a traffic analysis.
Yeah, there we go.
And so we need-
The initial one.
The engineer to confirm that that traffic analysis is the same thing that ITD was wanting, because ITD might have written the letter at the same time that he was submitting the traffic analysis. I think that there's a conflict there.
Yeah, so it happens in terms of these developments occur. I have my signature on a lot of these down south. So the information comes in and we are asked to comment or make comments to the development. We may not have full detail of the developments, those, you know, but we would essentially, you know, ask for certain things with not really being aware of a- of an actual traffic impact study done, so.
And the development agreement, then, if we put in that, that you're to review that and make sure that that is acceptable.
So I want to remove-
Because it's focused on State Highway fifty-five, I would review it, but I would also ask ITD to provide their comment, because it is their jurisdiction.
So I want to remove that last sentence in that condition of approval number two. And then condition of approval number three, I was speaking with Mr. Madison's attorney, and she would like us to add a word to condition of approval number three, last sentence, and just say it with state law and the required ditch agreement, just to make sure everyone knows it's the ditch agreement, not some other agreement with the adjacent landowner.
Now you gotta be confused. And the required agreement with adjacent landowner.
And the required ditch agreement. We want to be specific.
Oh, you just want to add the word ditch.
Just want to add the word ditch.
Well, I know there is a conveyance laws in Idaho, but I guess ditch would work.
And then fifteen, number twenty, a letter of approval is required. I want to add, "A letter of approval is required from Donley Rural Fire for either an off-site well or an off-site pond as water source for fire protection or other alternative that is acceptable." I know the applicant is talking about different alternatives for fire protection. And-
Kind of different alternatives.
Well-
Well, the two primary ones are well or pond.
Or bond?
Pond, yeah. Well, I have to source it meets, enough volume source meets certain requirements, and a well or a pond could possibly do that, and we're exploring both.
Did they talk to you about a buried tank? Are you sure what the pond is, it freezes up in the winter time? Did they talk to you about a buried tank?
He has too many lots, I believe, for a buried tank.
Oh, he's sort of, okay.
It's after a certain number of lots, they want like a hydrant sort of.
Right.
But he's gonna work that out with Donley Fire, and we will work it out with any of our ordinances that are applicable to that. Originally, it was gonna just be a well, and we were gonna require an off-site easement, so we're working through that. And that is the end of the changes to the facts and conclusions. I think that it's specific enough that you might be able to make a motion that when those changes are made, authorize the board to sign.
I'm getting a little confused in here, because somewhere in one of these documents, it still had the duplexes in there, but in this facts and conclusions, it specifically calls out in twenty-two, no duplexes, so I want to make sure we're all on the same page.
The other one.
So the other thing to consider is that as part of the traffic impact study, it also includes duplexes as part of the development. So it's probably-
De minimis, right?
Yeah, right. But because it's a document that's associated with a development, my recommendation is that you would update that.
We, you know, we could have the traffic engineer redo the math on traffic count, which is really what we're talking about.
Yeah, and it's gonna be in a more of a favorable situation. But I think to be, to be clear-
Accurate.
And accurate for the general public, you know.
We're happy to have the traffic engineer take those nine lots and calculate them as single residences instead of duplexes and change the traffic counts.
Which would decrease.
Decrease impact.
Yeah.
No, and I just have to say, I was the one that recommended the duplexes, for the record again.
It's your fault.
It is, all of this confusion about these duplexes, looking for some sort of affordable product. That was a year ago.
And I agree with them when they're on city services and closer to town, but not in the middle of a county.
That's all on me.
The other, I don't remember where I read it, unfortunately, we get so many documents with these things, I, you know, which thing it was, but one of them said the county was gonna work with ITD on removing those trees, and that would not be our responsibility.
That's in the development agreement. We aren't there yet. We're gonna move to that document as soon as we're done with this one.
Oh, okay.
Yep, and so is the, the other, she were talking about.
Development agreement?
Oh, the-
For the duplexes?
Townhouses, yeah, duplex. It's a new word.
So our goal with the facts and conclusions was, this is what your decision was, with your conclusions that you had and adequate mitigation for the impacts, and then we're going to go to the development agreement, which defines what that mitigation is.
David, you're all good with this?
Yes.
By the way, I did remove that, but Cindy has behest that you had to dig a well if the spring went dry for the guy next door, because there's no way to really prove that one way or another, so just put it on record.
That was an ambiguity, it was tough to resolve. However, he's our neighbor, and we're gonna be working with our neighbor to do whatever we need to help him, so.
Appreciate that.
Awesome.
So Sherri, are you willing to go forward and approve these?
Facts and, yeah, I think the facts and conclusions are great.
So you want to make the motion?
I would move that we approve the facts and conclusions for CUP, number twenty-four oh two, the River Rock Ranch, and, yeah.
As re-
Subdivision.
As re-
As amended.
As amended, okay. I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I will make those changes. I will get your signatures. The fourteen-day timeline starts now for the motion for reconsideration.
So now we're gonna go to the development agreement.
And that's where there's confusion, because when I'm reading facts and conclusions and the development agreement don't match, that's really confusing up here. So, sorry.
Okay, the development agreement, this is kind of the format we've been trying to And let's see, I think it'd be very beneficial if they inserted a project summary that describes three of the lots, size of lots, private roads, gates, landscaping, just, you know, just a little summary, so that when you start reading this development agreement, you know what you're looking at. It should say thirty lots, not three lots.
Don't we have a narrative in our application?
You do, but this is the development agreement, and if somebody picks this up in two years, it's like, oh, well, what was this for?
Would that narrative be a proper precursor to that you're describing?
As long as that narrative has changed to specifically describe where we've come to now.
Why don't we review that and see if, because that might be-
Yeah, just insert it in here. So that's one of the changes I'd like to make here. And then the signature sheets, the notary needs to be underneath the signature, so the signatures can't just be on the same page like that. On page five, you need county signatures, notary, developer signature, notary. That's just it.
Yeah, I think that's quite cool, isn't it?
It's best practice.
That's the way Valley County likes it. So we'll get that changed. We'll include the conditions of approval after approval of the facts and conclusions. And we'll go back and insert everything out of the facts and conclusions into this one, just as the conditions of approval. Off-site road improvement agreement. Let's skip that one for just a second, because that one will take the rest of the allotted time. And go to the restrictive covenants will need to be approved as part of the final plat. When we come back to the final plat, we want your full signed notarized conditions of approval. And then you have to remove the allowance of duplexes. And then limit identified, limits identified and conditions of approval, such as only one wood burning device and fertilizer constraints need to be part of those CCNRs. And I wasn't sure, they had put concept plans and depictions on here. They don't really have any concept plans or depictions. I think it was just a holdover from some previous development agreement. And now we go back to the off-site road improvements.
Number one. Oh, I don't think that we're in agreement to allow you to wait until the twentieth lot is sold to start improving some of these roads.
Second number one.
Very last sentence. Work should be completed within twelve months after the sale of the twentieth lot. I mean, that is almost of the completion of your subdivision, and that could be ten years from now. And so those first twenty lots are going to be impacting this county road. I know that you want to do it so that you can acquire some funds in order to help offset the development costs. That's not my consideration. My consideration is the health and safety of those that live and work in Valley County, and that those would be joining us.
Can I comment on that?
Yes.
I have the same concerns you do, too. This was a negotiation, the fee, the fee extraction was a negotiation that we were required to have with the, with the road department. And that's, we entered into this negotiation, I think, April or a long time ago, and in this negotiation, it was, the back and forth was how much and when. We absolutely conceded to how much. We asked for concession on when. The concession basis was cash flow versus original capital, big difference. It allows us, it allows us to be open and generous on the what if the when can be accommodated. This is, this is not set in stone from our point of view, but that was the agreement that we made with the people we were told to make the agreement with. And so we're open to an accommodation there. As you know, in this county, selling lots doesn't equal rooftops. And we are open to a restriction on, you know, permits for construction, you know, under some sort of way, or this same kind of thing, but with a specific time fuse in addition to the lot sales. So lot sales or X amount of time, whichever is first. And then in addition to that, Cindy has added that we would bond or letter of credit upon recordation. So the county was whole the entire time. So we've already financially guaranteed the county. It just allowed us to postpone the original capital. So at no time was a cap, the county made, or not may be made whole and protected. But she also suggested a certain time, a certain specific timeframe, which we are completely open to. We're just trying, the concept of trying to, you know, as we go through this process, layers of cost get added and added and added, and it's much easier for us to be generous if, if some of the money comes out of lot sales and that was what we're trying to reach.
So I had anticipated the concern with the twentieth sell, and we were talking about this last Thursday. And just an alternative was the twentieth sell or a timeline.
Or a financial guarantee, and I'll tell you why.
No, and, and a financial guarantee. Because it has to be financially guaranteed before we record the plat at a hundred and twenty percent.
Yeah.
Perfect. There's just too many times, especially, you know, I've been a developer in my lifetime, too. There's too many of these that are approved and never get built.
I've seen it.
And, yeah, and so we're counting on certain things happening, and then all of a sudden nothing happens. Or a portion of it happens and-
As you're aware, the financial guarantee is the trigger that protects the county. And then, now we got a little bit of leeway. And then the next thing is, okay, what is, what can, what can be done? What's available? It's really, it's really up to you. Ultimately, we're gonna do whatever you tell us to do. We're asking for a little bit of help so that we can pay for it out of lot sales.
So Cindy, I guess my question is, do we need to state it in this condition that he's gonna provide a bond or a letter of credit?
Yes, yeah, we're gonna have to change this.
So you're gonna add that to the-
We're just looking for what's acceptable to you.
If he's gonna do a letter of credit or a bond, I don't have a problem.
So twentieth lot sell up to ten years with a letter of credit?
I think ten years is too long.
Is ten years too long?
Yeah, I think five years, maybe.
Five years?
Five years is fine.
What do you recommend?
Well, I just wanted to add more thought as you start to deliberate here, is that a lot of the work that's gonna be done, there's gonna be a lot of trucks in the front end of all of this, that the road is not gonna be functioning as it currently is, is already probably having problems. But it's just gonna get worse as the development comes online. So what I'm indicating is that when we, when we do this and it's all separated based on time, it's, you're gonna see a lot more and a lot more complaints on the front end of the development, so. You probably already know this, but I thought I'd at least get that out.
So with furthering that thought, so if we have him develop it though upfront, it could be destroyed by the time he gets lot thirty done. So there's, you know, I mean, there's that back and forth when you think about it.
Yeah, if it's not his cause, if it gets destroyed, it's the county's cause then, because he has-
But if there's a, if there's a bond associated with it, it would be up to, I assume, up to the county in terms of executing or trying to use that money to focus the attention, but it's gonna be one of those things where, planning-wise, it's gonna be, it's gonna be really difficult to do with the budgets and constraints as we currently have, so.
What about if we split the difference? Because I was thinking the first ten lots, go something like, I don't know what, I don't know what you're even thinking about as far as lot sale costs.
Bring it up, let's talk.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking ten lots and five years, as far as a timeframe.
We can do that. We can do that. That's within the range of our availability. Let's do it, and we'll get her done, and we're gonna be working closely with Dan.
So ten lots, five years, and financial guarantees for a hundred and twenty percent of the cost of the road improvements from fifty-five to the east side.
Yes.
But Dan's right, you know, you go in there, build it all up at first, and then put all the cement trucks and the dump trucks, and it all comes apart before you can-
It's started.
Yeah, really fast.
So we'll fine-tune those words with professional words.
Can I mention one other item, just because I know the commissioners haven't been involved in this, and we talked about this a little bit? There's a certain amount of branding that a subdivision has, and having Spink Road paved is an enhancement to our brand.
Big time.
So it's in our interest to get that thing paved, not just so, the current extraction, our understanding of the current extraction wouldn't be enough to get that thing paved. It would just rebuild the road, the road base, basically, right? Make a good base road. We have asked and negotiated with, with the department, if we, if we are able to do, build the road and pave it, would you let us do it? One, when that was yes, and two, then in the event that we find additional suitable ground that we own, that we can, that it gets approved someday and has rooftops and extractions, that that would be offset back, because we'd literally just pay it in advance. Let's say we had an extra hundred thousand dollars out beyond what we agreed to, then the first hundred thousand of-
What we would do is have to come up with a credit-
Yes.
Cost that would go into phase two.
Finding ground on the same road?
Yeah, yeah, well, basically-
Done that for other developments.
Yes, yeah, it's fairly common, but I just want, I want it to be out there that- I like the idea of paving. Yeah, we do, too. Because that gets rid of all the dust for all the neighbors.
And the neighbors are happy and everybody's happy. Will that include the squaring up of it to the highway?
See, that might, I don't know, right? That will, that will get there, because we need to work with the surrounding property owners at that location to improve it, as we're talking about either a free-flowing right in, in.
I thought there, I meant the wrong application, but I thought we had a map that showed that there was enough right-of-way on all sides, all the way around to do it.
No, I looked at it, it's not enough for what I think would be suitable for that specific location. I think right now-
I think right now there was a, a single vehicle only being able to square it up. You know, around here, there's no single vehicle only. There's a trailer, there's trucks. So you've got, we've got to think in a bigger way at those locations. Especially, especially if you're, you're, you're trying to get any truck routes or anything like that established.
Yeah, because this is a direct shot to the, I mean, people are going to use it to get to the transfer site up there. They're going to have a truck, a trailer, and whatever in order to use it. So that's just reality. I'd much rather do it safety wise instead of just saying we have to make that a boxed intersection or whatever.
And if you want to do the whole road, David, you could do that, too.
So.
This is, this is, this is what he was saying as well. If there's this other, you know, additional development that may happen, there would be a credit associated with it. And I think beneficially, that would, I think, work out in everybody's favor.
All this, all this is to our benefit. We, we, we want the best road system possible. We're willing to pay for it. We're trying to find a way to do it, and we're asking for, we're asking politely to work with us, and you have, and we've been, we very much appreciate that. We, we want to be good neighbors. We want to be the developer that is an asset to the community, not one that's just extraction community. And so we're not fighting any of these ideas. We're trying to just fund them.
Well, it would be certainly be, like you said, to pave it changes the whole dynamics of the development. It really does, especially your internal roads.
So like I said, we're, we're not, we're not, we're not agreeing to increase that extraction at this point. But we're, we're just informing you that this is something that we're considering. We think it's beneficial to us. I have partners, financial partners. I think I can sell them on it. With the consideration you've given us of having some lot sales and some time, then I can tell the partners, I can generate this money without coming out of your pockets. This is much easier to accomplish this, and it's important to accomplish it for us, for the brand.
I'm struggling a minute on the credit at 100%, and I'll tell you why. As a real estate agent or a past real estate agent, you can add the cost of that $100,000 to those 30 lots in a nanosecond and be paid back for that.
I completely agree with you.
You know, I mean, it just makes it that much more viable on the lots. So as far as a credit in the future, I mean, 100% credit in the future to pave it, I don't think is appropriate because you will already recoup your costs. So I think that, you know, maybe 50% or some type of share. But let's negotiate on that in the development agreement.
We'll, we'll talk, we're happy to talk to you about that.
I would have heartburn over 100%.
Well, even if it's not paid, but it's say the basalt's holding for the whole road, there's a value to that past year development. And I think it's great. That's what we want. It's development paying its own way.
Absolutely.
But you charge more later on the lots, that's.
Well, let's be clear about that. That value is for every property owner on that road, 100% from us, contributed to every owner on that road. So, so I agree that we benefit, but so does everyone. And it's not fair that we only pay for everyone's benefit. Proportionality is the, is the basis of the extraction fee. You guys have already negotiated that. You've set policy. We're abiding by this all.
Let's continue that conversation because, and I agree with you. However, we have also been told by all of the surrounding landowners, they don't want to develop their property. Yeah, I know, I know. I'm laughing, too. But we do have one development there. He definitely should help contribute to this.
You mean, you mean the landlord that was trying to put an airport on his property? He the one that didn't want to develop it?
I don't know about that. That's prior to me, so therefore.
That was a long time ago.
We're talking about Brian Schaefer on the north side of Spink.
So he would want.
At corner 55.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Paid also. So he needs to be part of this.
But it would be interesting to see what the numbers come out to. To go ahead and assault the rest of that road and pave it, how much value that would create for phase two?
For everyone.
For everyone.
For everyone, yeah.
For everyone.
But, you know, phase two would be probably no cost at all.
But let's be fair, phase two is going to pay the extraction fees for every single lot, too. Where's that money going to go? It first should go to Spink Road. And then, you know, there, there, there's law stating where those money has to go. All we're saying is let's apply where state law says, if we pay it for it in advance.
You should get a credit for it.
We should get a credit for it. That's all we're saying. We're, we're not asking for any favors.
For other developments.
Yes, yes, you have. Yes, you have.
We will fine tune the development agreement. Is there anything else that you wanted to see in here? I mean, there's highlighted for the, I want the narrative. We're going to highlight the CCNRs.
CCNRs also, because these are one acre lots, can we put something in there about weed mitigation? You've got to mitigate weeds.
I think not only now, but into the future. We'll make sure it's listed in the development agreement.
So Cindy, on restricting covenants, B number two, you're going to take the duplexes out?
Yes.
Just want to make sure we're all on agreement.
Oops. Yeah, remove the allowances duplex. Limits identified in conditions of approval such as only one wood burning device and fertilizer constraints need be put in here also. We had some fertilizer constraints, and we'll, the code only allows one wood burning device, and it's better if people know that upfront before they design their house.
Cindy, number four on that, the offsite road improvements, that's where it says the county agrees to work with ITD for insulation, better signage, and tree trimming on 55. I don't believe that that is our responsibility to do that.
So that's number four. That's on the offsite. On number one, I want to make sure, as we rebuild it, we talked extensively about the steel grid. That has to be applied prior to any.
Well, you're, you're approving the plans.
So I just want to make sure that.
You brought it up.
You brought it up originally. I didn't see it in here, and so I thought I, I better make sure that you knew.
You know, that's probably, a lot of that is just because John is out of town, and that conversation was primarily between you two. And we, honestly, we thought you were going to generate a letter that kind of had some of these details we were waiting for. I think you were waiting for some, too, so.
Yeah, we were in that mode while I thought I was supposed to get a memo to kind of trigger all of this.
But fundamentally, you know, you asked him to design the road. He's going to work with you. He'll, he'll provide the engineering design. It'll be examined, reviewed, approved, whatever. And only until you've approved it, then obviously we can commence work. We'll do it under your supervision and, you know, normal procedures. I'm sorry, I just need to make.
You sent us a letter today, and honestly, I haven't had time to kind of take all that in. Did you hit your high points on the letter that you sent?
I, I did. I mean, it was just to quantify the discussion. And then I identified specifically what, if I, if we had to do a proportionality share, what that would cost of what we currently had in which, in most cases, it would cover all the way from your, all the way down to.
We, we think so, too.
55, without pay, without being paved.
Yeah, rebuild the road.
Just to rebuild the road. So essentially, that's pretty much all I, and then 55, the whole 55 intersection discussion.
So then, next time you see the development agreement in a few weeks or so, sometime before the final plat, and before the work's done on Spink Lane, we will bring that development agreement back, ready for signature based upon the discussion today.
Cindy, I have one more question, just because I don't know number K. Fencing allowed by review of ACC. What's ACC?
Architectural control.
Should you, should you write that out there, sir? Everybody knows what ACC is.
We'll get all that written out. This was just a, a draft of what's going to be in there. I would suspect that this restrictive covenant portion looks differently.
Well, you know, there's, like, the other issue is number, are elk feeding or wildlife feeding prohibited unless recommended by Fish and Game? Because they have fed elk in the past on severe winters. If Fish and Game says we need to start feeding those elk, this is going to prohibit that?
Only within the subdivision.
Yeah, within the subdivision.
43 acres. That prohibits the homeowners from doing what the city of Cascade residents were doing.
I got you. You know, we go down that road.
We wouldn't want all the elk of Valley County to migrate to this specific spot.
Well, there's not too many south, you know, what happens south of Donley where they do feed them. And pretty soon you've got 150, 200 head elk up here.
And watching the sides of the road every time we go through there.
Anything else?
Nope. We have the facts and conclusions. We will.
Thank you very much.
Fine tune the development agreement and bring it back.
Perfect. And that concludes this agenda. You're awfully quiet back there. It's kind of nice.
Not a problem.
We'll stay silent on that, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm not going to say anything.
I said I'll stay silent on that. Good seeing you, ladies. We didn't get to say hi, but hi.
I actually had a public comment really that this specific one is longer than I was here.
Oh, okay.
It's on the agenda.
Perfect. You're dismissed.
What do you want to say?
All right, Kathleen Trevor, and somewhat related to the discussion of the Highway 55 issue, just because I have a little bit of history on that.
The corridor study.
The corridor study.
You're the one that asked for the.
That was me. And I, I got the signed an official letter. And just a few items related to that, just if you all know the history, excuse me, but it's always good to make sure. So in 2016 or so, we had the opportunity to participate in what was supposed to be the development of the northern portion of the Idaho 55 corridor study, which focused on the section of Idaho 55 from Banks, Loon Road to New Meadows. And that information is all out of date now, but it was part of what was supposed to be drafted and never happened. And that sort of happened with the overall effort. Certain pieces have moved forward, but not anything related to the north section. So although it's always good to ask to make sure that happens, I think there are some additional things that I would suggest for the commission's committed consideration to boost those. There is in the conditional use permit process, part of the impact reports that's supposed to accompany applications. There is a section for traffic and that sometimes is barely limited in what the applicant says, unless there is additional work requested and done related to the number of trips that might affect Highway 55. So it can be helpful to gather more details to whoever was, I, I never met the gentleman here. I assume he's the new person with the Valley County Road Department. But there is an opportunity to develop more facts that both feed into what might help prioritize or galvanize some additional work on Highway 55. And that process can also help make sure that it either fits within your, the 10-year Valley County plan that you just finished, or consciously make decisions about reprioritizing particular projects. Because that can be a discussion to have with ITD where you, the county can invite them, and they might come up with some interim steps that are helpful to doing certain projects short of a whole corridor plan. Because the experience so far in planning is, it's hard to get that whole thing done in a timeframe that is meaningful. By the time you get to the end, the numbers can be out of date. And there are opportunities to use, depending on how you set up your impact fees. But there is allowance under state code, as recognized in Valley County ordinances, where you can have intergovernmental agreements. Idaho Code 678204A does allow for entering into agreements with Idaho Transportation Department. So you can have Valley County, Idaho Transportation Department. And you can come up with a project of, here's the turn lane that makes sense for application of those fees. I did hear an initial opinion on how that gets prioritized, but I just, seeing the struggles, facing the struggles of Valley County and Highway 55, that's right now, you're.
We don't have impact fees, just to make that point, right up front at the table. So we have development agreements.
Yes. So you can have the ability to have intergovernmental development agreements. The references, you can agree to have impact fees if and when you adopt them. But there's also the opportunity to have intergovernmental agreements, so you can feed those together. And it can be helpful to sit down, ask ITD what types of things are helpful concrete steps that can be taken while the initial larger effort might be taking place. So I just make those as suggestions for dealing with, in medical terms, the main artery of Valley County is clogging and trying to do something about it, recognizing overall priorities of very expensive things like the Banks intersection, et cetera. But meanwhile, there's lots of other places that can be thoughtfully reviewed and improved. So that was my honest comment for the day.
Thank you.
So that would basically entail, like, if the county wanted to do it, currently, we would have to enter into contract with ITD to do that, and I'm assuming pay all the costs. So that's another reason why we need more funding.
Well, I, I think that the other part of that is if there was a large development, like another ski resort or something going in, and you wanted to require a turn lane be done on Highway 55 before that was approved, they could work through Valley County on an interagency.
But I kind of got the feeling from Dan that we can't, we don't have the authority to make a developer do anything on ITD.
That's what Kathleen was saying, that we could do it in an interagency agreement.
That might be something you didn't want to dig in. What does that look like? Is there a standard?
That would be a legal question. Interagency agreements. I've never even heard of that, so.
I have.
It'd be like, okay, Tamarack's coming in, they need a turn lane at Donley. We're going to do an interagency agreement with ITD, and then we're going to send the belt to Tamarack.
Something kind of like that.
Need to dig in more on that option.
That's what I understood.
Agency agreements, gentlemen. They're going to be on your plate next.
Well, we have interagency agreements between fire departments and things. Jurisdictionally, I mean, the police, I mean, when there used to be city of Cascade, I'm called police, they all had interagency agreements.
And ITD can say, no, we don't want to do an agreement, and we're just where we are now.
That's all part of that discussion, take care of this corridor.
Well, we're going to move on. It's time for me to go home. I'm getting tired.
We have an action item still.
We have one more item on the agenda. This is an executive session by Idaho Code 742061F, legal counsel. So at this time, I'll make the motion. We go into Idaho Code 742061F. We have a second.
A second.
Motion is second by Roca.
Hop and I.
Hasbro, guy, and Doug, we will be in at 3:22.